Hello, everybody, and welcome back to Inside Lowell. I am your host, Teddy Panos, and this evening, this evening, of course, being Wednesday, May 3rd, I've got a special guest, a candidate for Lowell City Council, looking to represent the Acre Neighborhood, also known as District Number Seven. Going to introduce you to him in just a couple of moments and find out a little bit more about him, who he is, where he stands on the issue. It's part of our efforts here at Inside Lowell to keep you up to date on everything happening here in the middle city. As we like to say, if Lowell is your home, Inside Lowell is your place. So we're going to get to Mr. Kimbang in just a couple of moments. But first, let me thank our sponsors for helping to make this podcast and all of our podcasts, and for that matter, all of Inside Lowell possible. Of course, thank you to our friends at Washington Savings Bank. They've extended their special offer to Lowell and Drake it residents where they want to give you $300. And all you have to do is open a brand new account, get $1,000 directly deposited into that account within 30 days. So paychecks, social security checks, get $1,000 into that account through a direct deposit. They're going to give you 300, a 30% return on your money. So many other great features at Washington Savings Bank, opportunities for you to bank individually or as a business, small business, the community, that is their specialty. Learn more online at washingtonsavings.com. Thank you as well to our friends at Hafner's, so many great services they provide, of course, home heating oil in the winter, propane for your summer barbecues, for your heated swimming pool, maybe for your little burners outside to keep you warm. Oh, yeah, those all operate on propane as well. So many great services at Hafner's, their gas stations, their car washes. Check them out online at hafners.com. You can also call 866-IT-KICKS. That's 866-IT-KICKS. And last, but certainly not least, you see their logo behind us, Reverie 73 just voted the number four cannabis shop in Massachusetts by boston.com, and they are the highest ranking individual shop. The top three all have multiple locations. Reverie 73, one location, it's right here in Lowell, 1148 Bridge Street, and it's barely a year old, so quite an accomplishment. Congratulations to the entire team over there. Let Reverie 73 elevate your cannabis experience. Learn more by going online, reveries73.com, and again, their beautiful location, 1148 Bridge Street in Lowell. And with that, I turn my attention to tonight's special guest. As I told you, he is a candidate for Lowell City Council out of District Seven, what is known as the Acre District, kind of a familiar name in the city of Lowell. If you followed Lowell at all, he's been active, he's been vocal, but I don't believe he's ever run for city council before, though you flirted with it two years ago, didn't you?
Yes, I do.
Talking, of course, about Fru Kimbang. Good evening, Fru, and welcome to our studios here.
Good evening, Teddy. It's an honor and a privilege for me to appear on this wonderful platform to talk to the people of Lowell, who have welcomed me graciously, like made me a good Lowellian.
Well, let's see if you still think it's an honor when I'm done with you. Actually, this is really a chance for you to introduce yourself to our audience. So who are you? Who is Fru Kimbang? And why do you want to be a city councillor here in Lowell?
Well, first of all, Fru Kimbang was born in Cameroon, West Africa. In 1985, I left Bamenda to the States. I had already applied and got my admission into Roxbury Community College. So I flew into Boston. I knew no one here. When I reached Boston, I did not even know the currency. A police officer took me out, put me in a cab to North Station. I went to North Station. He bought me a ticket. I sat there, and I saw a good Samaritan was coming to Lowell. When I lost my train ticket, he bought me a ticket and came all the way to the train station and moved the map. I gave him the address, 488 Moody Street. In those days, we didn't have GPS. So he took his map around 10:00 PM. He drove up and stopped at 488 Moody Street. Then when I came there, because my brother had studied here, so when he was going, he paid for the apartment. He said, there's an old man there. When you go, he's going to know you. When I knocked the door, he said, hey, Pat, because my brother's name is Patrick. So I said, I knew you were coming. He's of late now of blessed memory. The address was 488 Moody Street, and I have been in Lowell and in the Acres since 1985. And I always say, to whom much is given, much is expected. Here was me, coming from Africa, knowing nobody. Came the people of Lowell, welcomed me and made Lowell my home. Attended University of Lowell. I have a bachelor's in economic and a minor in computer information system. I had my master's in computer information system at the Rivier College, and also I have an advanced economic degree from Boston University. I am married for 28 years with four wonderful children. My children are all a product of the Lowell schools. My first doctor is a doctor and a professor at University of Minnesota. She graduated with honors from Johns Hopkins. And my son, too, a product of Lowell High, is an engineer in Atlanta. He graduated from Lowell High, went to WPI. My third son, Agnien Kimbang, a product of Lowell High and the Lowell school system. He was class president of 2016 at Lowell. He went to graduate of Suffolk University. And I have my last son, who is in high school now. So through this while, I have received so much from Lowell. And I said, you know what? This wonderful city that has given me so much, and all through, I have always been active in the community and giving, receiving from people and learning. And for almost 35 years, I'm a member of Lowell, and I feel that it is about time that I give back to a city that has given me so much.
You gave me that quote that you use while you're introducing yourself, to whom much is given, much is expected. And I hope I didn't butcher the quote, but it was something like that. And it was one of my favorite quotes that I hear, and I was glad to see you use it. I was smiling as you were telling the story, because it reminds me a lot of the story of my parents, and really, any immigrant who has come to this city, coming here in search of a better life, trying to, you know, set up a better life for their children, but ultimately kind of succeeding. And it's also really the story of the neighborhood that you've lived in, and you are hoping to represent the Acre Neighborhood. Because I would imagine, as you have traveled through the years and talked to your neighbors, talked to people throughout the city, and as you start knocking on doors and campaigning this summer and this fall, you're going to hear so many stories similar to yours. How has that experience, how has the immigrant experience, coming here from another land, how has that shaped your belief system and your ideology and how you might choose to govern?
Well, you know, I always believe that you always, before you govern, you have to know the people, you have to go out and talk to the people. And also, you have to be active in the community. All my life in Lowell, I've been active in the community with the police and volunteering on, with nonprofit organizations. When they started the Folk Festival, I don't know how many times I've volunteered there. I have served on numerous boards. I served as a co-chair of Lowell Charter Public Schools for almost 70 years. I served on the Board of LTC for more than 11 years, 12 years. I served on the Board of Lowell General Patient Advocacy Board. I'd served on the Board of One Lowell. I served on the Board of Lowell Police Oriented Service, and I even traveled with Commissioner Ed Davis to Washington and California with the chiefs of police, just talking about immigrant perspective of policing. And I've always, with all these people, I learned so much from them. And I always say that sometimes that has shaped my view of life and that really say that if you want to develop your ego, hang around those who look up to you. But if you want to develop yourself, hang around people who know more than you and that they can mentor you. And this, all these people have been my inspiration. So I've always heard that you have to give back to the community. And with all this, I feel that I am a people person, and I feel that it is about time that I really engage the city and even the district, District Seven, that has done so much for me. But ironically, I would tell you that, you know, there are seven continents in the world. There are seven days in a week. I will be representing District Seven. And if you want to travel around the world in seven days, come and spend seven days in Lowell. You would have met anyone in all the continents of the world. So that is the beauty of Lowell. Lowell is a mosaic. And I was also a founding father of the African Cultural Association here in Lowell in 2000. So we started a theme there was a Taste of Africa. We felt that how can we bring our own culture, music, dance, and everything to share with the people of Lowell? So prior to that, there was nothing here. So the African Festival has been going on now since from 2000, and I was the president of the African Festival for eight years.
It's a tremendous success, as you've mentioned. I have to say that if you are successful on that Tuesday in November, the first Tuesday in November, I think the next Lowell City Council will have some of the best quotes ever coming from you. You have a great way with words, and you're a very inspirational speaker, as I'm sitting here, listening to you. Let's talk a little bit about where you stand on the issues and your district. Of course, the Acre was one of the districts that was talked about a lot with the switch to the district representation from the former at-large district. How do you think the change in government has worked for the neighborhood? And how do you think Paul Ratayem, Councillor Paul Ratayem, the first elected councillor from that district, who you will be running against this fall, how do you think he has fared in representing the district?
Well, you know, I mean, you're talking about changing the political system in Lowell. I've been involved ever since 2009, when one Lowell actually put an initiative to advance that move. I served on the board. And when the case to change the political system, I was one of the African black person who was, I was there, I was attending all those meetings. And talking about Paul Ratayem, that's my friend, you know? When he launched his election campaign last time, I was about to launch my own campaign, but because of family issues, we met, he invited me, and I've always attended his fundraiser. So this campaign is not about an individual, it's about serving Lowell. Make it clear, Lowell is the city that has given me so much, and I want to serve Lowell. And I would tell you that to answer your question, I think my vision for the District Seven is to expand economic growth opportunities, drive greater improvement in education, improve neighborhood safety, readiness, and revitalization, promote new ideas for equity, inclusion, and diversity, and also try to engage the community about one of the most chronic problems that we are facing in the city, which is homelessness, homelessness, and also preserved and open space. That's some aspect of taking care of our environment. So if those are really the platform on which I envision, and I do really see that to embark on this, I have to engage the people. I have to talk to everybody, because no one has monopoly of knowledge. And to be able to represent the people, I will be their servant. I want to listen to them. They are the ones. They always say that until you are in the kitchen, before you can know how hot it is. So if I engage these people, they will tell me their issues, and I will be able to work with them and be their spokesperson or representative at the city hall.
So that's an interesting answer, because it sounds like you have a friendship with the incumbent councillor, Paul Ratayem, and you've attended his fundraisers. It's striking to me, because right now, you are the first publicly declared challenger for one of the incumbent district councillors. Now, there's stories out there that one or two more may face a challenger, but it appears that a few of them won't even have an opponent, let alone a primary slash preliminary. You're going to have to differentiate yourself from councillor Yem. How will you be different? What issues do you believe that you can focus on that perhaps he hasn't? Or what votes would you think that you might have been different on than councillor Yem?
Well, first of all, I will talk about what the things that are common to us. All of us are immigrants, and we come from different parts of the world. Councillor Yem comes from Asia, I come from Africa. So that will be a novel introduction of ideas on the city council that has never happened before. And coming from this perspective, we bring ideas that are not really very common and look at things differently as an immigrant. So, but like I said, first of all, I'll have to talk to the people to earn, to know exactly what the issues are. I would not be arrogant to say that I know the issues until I talk to the people, and I will be able to stand up and know that and come up with a platform that exactly this is how I will address the issues. And as I mentioned to you, I have given in a nutshell my platform to foster economic growth in the district and in Lowell, because the district is part of Lowell. And also to drive a greater improvement in the education. I am a proponent of good education. I had, I served on the Board of Lowell Charter Public Schools. My student and my children went to public schools. So I am really an embodiment of the educational system here in Lowell. So as well as, you know, Lowell is a mosaic, and it brings all of us around the world to contribute. We, you know, the economic of Lowell is based on culture, tradition, and music and everything. So I think that in that aspect, I am going to equally be, bring new ideas. And like I mentioned to you, I was a founding member of the African Cultural Association, who advanced the African Festival, and I was the president of that organization. And these are things that never existed in Lowell, but we saw that, you know, it is when every hand is on deck, we experience what we don't, what doesn't exist here, and we bring our rich culture and tradition to share with the people. And I also told you that I will be able to work, I am very conscious of the environment. And we know that we have a great university here in Lowell that takes care of that. First of all, that is very, very environmental conscious. I will have to meet the environmental department at the University of Lowell and talk to the staff. I've already approached them to learn more, to learn more. This is actually the phase for me to gather information. And I mean, I am passionate, and I am not only passionate and sitting, but I am passionate and getting on the street to learn from people.
You are watching Inside Lowell. I'm your host, Teddy Panos, Lowell City Council candidate in District Seven, the Acre District. Fru Kimbeg is joining us, going to continue our conversation. A couple of things you mentioned there, education's important. UML has a big footprint in your district, and it seems to be expanding. Also, economic development, there's a giant development project going on right now. People can see it sprouting up, the old Jeanne d'Arc Credit Union. It's surprising to me that so, it took so long, so close to the university, to see more economic development in that neighborhood, in the Acre Neighborhood. Has the city done a good enough job leveraging the relationship with the university to help spring up businesses in all the different neighborhoods, but also in the downtown, your quote, central business district?
Well, I am a proud alumni of the last class of University of Lowell, before it became UMass Lowell. And the development is incremental. I cannot, at this moment, either condemn whether they didn't do what they did or so. Development is incremental and based on the conditions that are prevailing at that time. And if I probably, in the past, there were prior things, important things that needed to be done, maybe taking lifesavings, things that needed to be done to where we are. And at this stage, development is advancing because of, I mean, look at it this way, the computer age came, now we are getting into artificial intelligence. Looking at life in the age of artificial intelligence, you would not turn back and say, in the computer years, when computers were coming, this is what they should have done. But I would equally say that the partnership between the city and the University of Lowell is growing and will only continue to grow stronger. And as I already mentioned to you, that I believe in building bridges. And to be able to build bridges, you have to communicate, you have to have the courage to go out and meet people that are not, that are not common to you. Incidentally, was it yesterday, I met with Professor Juliette at University of the Environmental Department to actually learn what wonderful things the university is doing about environment. So that is how I gathered the knowledge, and as I am looking forward to represent the district, it's not passively, but I want to come there with a world of knowledge gathered from people who know.
Interestingly enough, the, just last week, there was a big ceremony, they, some new technology with National Grid. Now, I don't know if technically that's the Acre Neighborhood, or if that crosses over to the Lower Highlands, but if you, but it's out on Broadway Street, right, where they had that event with National Grill and National Grid and kind of a first of its kind. Are these, are these the types of issues that you see yourself focusing on, how you can use the already existing resources we have here in the city? Or are we missing other opportunities to bring in newer technologies? What have you gathered so far from your?
Well, talking about that technology, I was talking to the professor, her name, I just know by the first, I can remember the first name, Juliette, but she is explaining how the soil gathers heat, and then how they will use that energy to be able to generate heat to warm the apartments and also try to get away from fossil fuel. So if, what was your question again?
Well, I'm just, it's, I know there were some people who kind of looked at that, and they didn't like the fact that it was National Grid that was involved in that. It's a new technology, and it is a green technology, as best as I can understand it. But there are some folks that kind of indicated to me, they see the National Grid name on it there, and they weren't thrilled with it. So I guess kind of this, as you talked about, you know, we eventually have to move off of fossil fuels, but a lot of the same companies that are in the fossil fuel industry are also some of the leading innovators. You know, for instance, there's something called carbon capture that I'm trying to learn more about. Now, that involves using fossil fuels still, but you're, but if the technology is to believe and it is advanced enough, you're not putting anything new into the atmosphere. Are you one of these folks, as you talk about the environment, that you want to completely move in a different direction? Or do you believe in using some of the resources and the partners we already have, some of the entities we already have?
Well, I believe that do things the natural way. As a child, you cannot, you cannot just get up and run. So you have to crawl, you have to stand up and then run, what the existing thing, and I'm not here to bash any company also, because I am, I don't have that wisdom and that knowledge. For anyone who advances some points against what is existing, it is through knowledge of the environment and knowledge that that person has. So, but I do believe that the most important thing is educate, inform, and let the people be aware of what the consequences of the actions would be. Because sometimes we get dragged into something which we have not really been sensitized. And then in the end, when we see that certain things that could have, that we would have been involved in the decision making, we were not involved in, and then that's when caused a problem. But I like changes, and changes is often resisted until we get used to it. So anything that can make Lowell advance, not stay, not move behind, I think I will be a partner with that.
Okay. I'd like to wrap up by kind of combining two issues that were on your list of issues that are important to you. Housing and homelessness, the two are related in many ways. Again, we're recording this on Wednesday night, May 3rd. On last night, May 2nd, the city council had a very long discussion about ADUs, accessory dwelling units, I believe, is where it stands. Would you, would you support zoning changes that would allow these units to be built, constructed, added on here in the city of Lowell as a way to help with affordable housing? Or do you believe that they will ruin the character of a neighborhood and won't do anything to make housing more affordable in a city?
Well, I don't really believe in imposing decision on people. I believe in community discussion. I believe in hold that if such a decision has to be made, we have to get the community involved. We have to get the property owners involved. And then in the end, we have to also explain exactly what we are bringing into the neighborhood. Because there is, when you talk about homelessness, I was once homeless and slept in my car when I came here. Sometimes it is not, it is not the fault of those who are homeless, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't penalize them for equally being homeless. We should be a little bit compassionate. So the thing is, if we can bring the property owners and the authorities and discourse, I believe everyone is so compassionate to see that this problem that is plaguing our city, and not only our city, but the state and the nation, there can be many ways that we can bring it so that it can be addressed.
Has the city done enough? Has this city council done enough to address the homelessness issue in the city?
Well, I don't believe in blames, because I don't know the true facts. I don't know what the city is doing. To address problem, you have to have money. If I stand outside and blaming that nothing has been done to, I know whether the city has that money to do that, and they are holding. So it is but incumbent on me to know what the facts are, to be able to articulate and speak intelligently. I am not the one, the type of person who throws stones at the distance. I want to come closer and see the problem and see how we can fix it than blaming.
How can folks learn more about your campaign? Have you, have you set up the website and the social? Have you set up the website and the social media and everything that goes with a Twenty First Century Campaign?
You know, the excitement of running for city council was right there. But when I really got to the nitty gritty, I just find that it's not really easy that I thought, but it's not impossible as well. So I'm still forming my team. But if anyone would love to join my team, my phone number is nine seven eight six five four eight seven nine six. And the email address is fru, that's F R U, four, four, that's number four, I am still in the process of building a website. And when that is ready, I'll be able to reach the people. I really ask anyone out there who has, who can support me in this journey to serving District Seven and Lowell to join my campaign, to do what we need all of us to do for Lowell. And I believe that, you know, the better days of Lowell are yet to come. And it can only come by being active and participating in building our neighborhoods and our city.
What's that saying again, to whom much is given?
To whom much is given, much is expected. And Lowell has given me so much and it is time to give back. That is why I'm running for city council.
All right. Fru Kimbang, candidate for Lowell City Council. Thank you so much for joining us. Well, hopefully we'll connect a few more times. I'd love to set up a debate between you and Paul and councillor Yem and anybody else who gets in on the race as well from your district. So thank you for joining us and good luck.
My pleasure. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
All right. Thank you and thank all of you for joining us as well here at Inside Lowell. Little taste of one of the candidates that's running out there. What'd you think? We give you plenty of opportunity to chime in on all of our various formats as we gear up for that first Tuesday in November and the Lowell municipal election. Till next time, I'm Teddy Panos for everyone here at Inside Lowell. Stay safe, gang.
Hey, Teddy, thank you very much.